All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm calling the Monday, October 27th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person, or the public may also watch this meeting online at BurnsvilleMN.gov/Meetings, or view us on Comcast, Channel 16, or 859. The public can also join us on Zoom by going to zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting's webpage and in the agenda. The Planning Commission serves as an advisory body to the City Council on land use, zoning, and development matters. Its role is to review proposals to ensure they align with the city's comprehensive plan and zoning regulations. The Commission holds public hearings and makes recommendations to the City Council for final action. A public hearing provides applicants and community members the opportunity to comment and express their views on a land use application. If you'd like to speak, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and share your comments with the Commission. Due to the number of items on our agenda tonight, we kindly ask that you please keep your comments to under three minutes or less. After all testimony is received, the hearing will be closed, and the Commission will discuss and take action on that item. All right. First item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion is carried. Second agenda topic is approval of our minutes from October 13th, 2025. Commissioners, did you get a chance to review? And can I get a motion?
I move that we adopt the minutes.
I'll second it.
Beautiful. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion is carried. Onto our third agenda topic. We will be reviewing an application of Ken Sheehan for a variance to locate an ADU accessory dwelling unit within an existing two-level garage in front of the principal structure and be a setback eight feet from the front property line at 980 Pershing Circle, being presented by Mr. Jakes, Associate Planner. Again, just a note, if you'd like to speak during the public hearing, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and share your comments with the Commission. All right, Mr. Jakes.
Thanks, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Great to be with you this evening. As Ms. Chair mentioned, the item before you is a variance for two items in the zoning code, which is the front setback, and then to locate the ADU closer to the front property line than the principal structure. Subject site is located at 980 Pershing Circle. The site is a residential property, surrounded by residential properties as well. Site is currently zoned R1, one-family residential, and is guided low-density in the 2040 comprehensive plan. The site was originally platted in 1924 as Lot 17 of Lyndale Beach, and the house was constructed in 1954. The detached garage, which is the subject item related to the subject item before this evening, was constructed in 1980 following variance approval. The variance that was approved included three lots in total, which was a subject site, and then two lots adjacent to the west of the site this evening. That variance that was granted in 1980 allowed for a two-level detached garage, and it allowed a variance to three items within the zoning code. The first was the detached garage was closer to the front lot line than the principal structure, setback eight feet from the front property line when the zoning requirement is 30 feet, and was constructed below the required 18 inches above street grade. So the proposal before this evening is to locate the accessory dwelling unit within the lower level of the two-level detached garage. And again, that variance would be to locate that ADU itself closer to the front property line than the principal structure, and then to have that be setback eight feet, which is in accordance with the approved variance from 1980. And I'll just note that the reason the variance is before this evening is because that variance in 1980 was specifically for a detached garage, and didn't include any other uses in that variance. So it was very specific, which is why the application is before this evening for an ADU specifically. The site plan is shown on screen before you. The detached garage is in the top right of the screen. The ADU would be a 400-square-foot ADU, and then the applicant is proposing a small patio addition in red, which would be the only site alterations on-site, other than running utilities to the ADU. Rendering of the structure is on screen. Again, the only change to the structure would be this patio. And I'll just note that from the street on Pershing Circle, the only part of the garage you can see is the upper garage portion with the garage door. You would never know that the ADU is located in the lower level, as that entrance exit to the ADU is ground level facing the house. Just to remind the Commission, a variance allows a proposal to vary from the strict application of the zoning ordinance. It does require practical difficulties that are not caused by the property owner and that are unique to the subject property. And then economic considerations do not constitute a practical difficulty. Related to this specific application, there are two practical difficulties. The first is that the home was constructed prior to the Shoreland Overlay District standards, and the second is the topography of the site. And then again, the existing garage is conforming due to that variance granted in 1980. Diving into each practical difficulty, firstly, since the home is adjacent to Crystal Lake, it is located within the Shoreland Overlay, which provides or requires extra standards of the lot. Firstly, the Shoreland Overlay requires a 75-foot setback from the ordinary high-water level to the house. The house was constructed prior to the standards, and at about a 40-foot setback. And because of that, it's not feasible for a new structure to be located between the house and that ordinary high-water level setback line. The zoning code would currently want a property owner to locate an ADU between the rear of the house and the rear lot line, which, in this case, isn't feasible due to that kind of setback issue, as a 75-foot setback would put that ADU adjacent to the house instead of in the rear of the lot. So the existing site is shown on screen before you. That measurement shown here, kind of zoomed in here, shows that 40-foot setback. If that ADU would be at 75 feet, it'd be kind of back in this area, which wouldn't meet the intent of the ADU code. The second practical difficulty of the variance is topography of the site. If a new structure were to be built, and it would meet requirements, firstly, significant tree removal would be required, and then, secondly, a large area of the site would be required to be graded, larger than the actual footprint of the structure itself. And one of the goals and intents of the Shoreland Overlay is really to limit grading work when adjacent to bodies of water and to preserve existing ecosystems, which a new ADU structure would conflict with kind of the intent and goal of the Shoreland Overlay. Existing site is shown on screen before you. Again, just the large amount of trees throughout the site. And then topography, it's about a 40-to-50-foot grade change between the southern lot line and the northern lot line. Terms of planning considerations, the proposed ADU location within the existing garage is the most practical and feasible option for the site. The property is located within the Shoreland Overlay, and the existing house is legal conforming due to the setback. Minimal site alterations would be required with the proposed location. Again, the property owner is just proposing that patio addition, and then it will not alter the character of the neighborhood, as that ADU isn't visible from the street and is surrounded by trees. With that, the recommendation is on screen. Staff does recommend that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the variance to locate the ADU within an existing two-level detached garage located in front of the principal structure and to be setback eight feet from the front property lot line at 980 Pershing Circle. There are two conditions of approval proposed. The first is, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall sign and return the variance document to planning staff for recording with Dakota County. And the second, prior to habitation of the ADU, a certificate of occupancy shall be issued by the building department. With that, the recommendation is on screen, and staff's available for questions.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Jakes. All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Commissioner Anderson?
Are there any restrictions on the usage of the ADU?
Commissioner Anderson, there are not. Really, the intent of the variance was just for setback and location, not for the use of it. The use would be regulated by city code.
Any other questions, Commissioners? All right. Commissioner Hamilton?
Did the applicant define what they're going to use this addition for?
Yeah. Commissioner Hamilton, the applicant's intent is to complete the ADU this winter, and then they would move into the ADU while they complete house renovations. And then, once house renovations are complete, they would move back into the main house on-site, and then the ADU would be utilized by family members. The applicant indicated to staff that the intent was, instead of spending money on a rental while house renovations were going on, to improve the property and invest in the on-site structure, I guess. And then I will also note, we did receive one comment from a neighboring resident, which I believe was on At Your Seats this evening. Just wanted to touch on that before I forget. The big concern, or the concern, I guess, from the resident was related to the ADU being rented and the requirements of short-term rentals. And staff did respond to the resident this morning, and just noted that ADUs are, of course, permitted by right, and the intent is for them to be accessory. The reason it's before the Commission this evening is due to the location of the structure and really the Shoreland Overlay. On a typical residential lot, it would just be straight to a building permit, and it wouldn't come before the Commission at all. So just to call that out. And then, just to note that short-term rentals within the ADU are prohibited by code. So anything under 30 days, like Airbnb or VRBO, would be prohibited within the ADU.
All right. Mr. Jakes, if no other questions, I can open the public hearing. All right. And I will open it at 6:41 PM. Anyone wishing to speak to this agenda topic can approach the podium, and you'll say your name and address for the record. The applicant is present. You can also approach the podium. Come on down.
Good evening. My name's Ken Sheehan. I am the applicant. I live at 980 Pershing Circle, and I think the situation was relatively straightforward in how it was described. My wife and I have moved into the Burnsville community about four years ago, and would like to stay here. And renovating our primary home is a desire that we have. It was built, as you saw, I think, in 1954. It's undergone two additions that really could use some renovation work to create a more cohesive home. And as we looked at the work effort to do that in the time period, we thought, why not invest in our own property and in the community by renovating this underutilized portion of the lower level of this garage, rather than renting property nearby? And to be honest, it's more convenient while the construction is underway to be on-site. And the option of building an ADU on this site really seemed impractical, given this underutilized space that is ready-made for like a small, you know, either a studio or a guest house in the future. But our primary use is to move into it while we renovate our other home, and then we have the benefit of it there. Could be an office, could be anything in the future. But our current intention is not to create a rental property out of it, it's to create a space for us to live, so we can complete the renovation of our primary residence.
Beautiful. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right.
Thank you for joining.
Absolutely. If no other questions, I can close the public hearing. All right. I will close the public hearing at 6:44 PM, and we are ready for discussion or motion.
It seems pretty straightforward to me. It's space that's there, they're just finishing it so they can use it temporarily. And if, unless anybody else has a comment or question, I'd be happy to make a motion. Yes. So I move that we recommend to the City Council approval of the variance to locate an accessory dwelling unit in front of the principal structure, and for it to be located eight feet from the front property line at 980 Pershing Circle, subject to the following conditions. Condition one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall sign and return the variance document to the planning staff for recording with Dakota County. And condition number two, prior to habitation of the ADU, a certificate of occupancy shall be issued by the building department.
Beautiful. We have a motion.
Second motion.
So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right. The motion passes.
When will this be before the City Council?
When will this be before the City Council?
Yes, this item will be before the City Council on their November 25th meeting. It's worth noting that their November 18th meeting has been rescheduled due to lack of quorum to November 25th.
Thank you. Question? All right. The next item on our agenda is the application of Reuter Walton Development for a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning, conditional use permit, planned unit development, preliminary and final plat for an apartment complex at 2316 and 2420 Old County Road 34 Place, being presented by Ms. Chapman, Associate Planner.
Thank you, Chair. Attached here is an aerial image and also a zoning image of 2316 and 2420 Old County Road 34 Place. The left-hand side image is the zoning. There are two sites on this image. Currently, 2420, the one on the left-hand side, that one is zoned R1, single-family residential district. And the right-hand one, 2316, is B4 Highway Commercial District. Most properties to the west are similarly single-family zoned, and then to the north is I-1 Industrial Park. And then to the east are similarly B4 Highway Commercial Districts, and then to the south are R3B High Density Residential Properties. And then the right-hand image is just an aerial view of the subject properties. Some background on the subject. Reuter Walton Development is proposing to build a 120-unit, four-story apartment building on 5.6 acres of land. The conference of, as part of their request, they are asking to do a comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide the property to HDR, so High Density Residential, and to rezone the properties to R3B High Density Residential District. They are also asking for PUD, Planned Unit Development Flexibility, to build the apartment, and a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow the apartment in the R3B district. And a preliminary and final plat is needed to combine the two properties into one. Some general information about funding and the residents that will be in this facility. General overview of this is that funding for the project will be through the Dakota County Development Agency, CDA, Workforce Housing Development Program. Of the 116, or of the 120 units, 116 units will be 60% average median income, AMI. So in Dakota County, that would equate to about $55,000 per year. That's geared towards working professionals, so teachers, police officers, firefighters. And those remaining four units will be part of the CDA Housing Choice Voiter, I can't speak today, voucher program. Some general history about the properties. So 2420 Old County Road Place is R1, single-family residentially zoned district and guided as LDR, Low Density Residential. And 2316 Old County Road Place is zoned B4 Highway Commercial and guided BUS, that's Business, Retail, and Office. Properties currently in discussion today are unplatted, so they are currently just meets and bounds. And they have some aspects right now of blight, and there have been some previous code-maintenance issues for those properties. As I mentioned previously in the slides about the zoning, most of the properties directly to the west are single-family zoned, and then to the south are apartment buildings and townhomes, which are high-density residentially zoned. And then to the far east are B4 Highway Commercial District zoned properties. So we did have a City Council Sketch Plan meeting on August 12th, and based on the feedback we got from the City Council, they were supportive of this project. Specifically, they noted that it addressed a housing demand, especially providing housing that is outside of the heart of the city. For several years, we've been seeing more and more projects, multifamily projects within the heart of the city. So this will add more housing opportunities, not just within that area. There is also two neighborhood meetings, one on July 24th and September 24th. During these meetings, or we sent out 209 notifications to neighboring property owners about these meetings. And we received about 20 residents at the first meeting, that July 24th, and then we had about six residents come to that September 24th meeting. And there is a bunch of different questions at all these meetings, but I kind of, the majority of those comments and questions were in relation to parking, screening, landscaping, number of units, property values, timelines, and traffic. Traffic was one of the main questions that was discussed in these meetings. And at the second meeting specifically, residents did share concerns about traffic conditions on Williams Drive and garbage trucks using Old County Road Place to bypass traffic. And since then, staff has notified haulers to avoid this route unless they are servicing the neighborhood. Here's just a site plan of the proposed project. It just shows you the general layout of where that proposed building will be and where those driveway accesses and parking lots will be located. As I continue through these slides, I will talk more specifically about parking, landscaping, and the amenities they will have on that site. So as part of making this project happen, one of the first steps is doing a comprehensive plan amendment. As mentioned previously, the lots are not currently zoned High Density Residential. One of the lots is Low Density, LDR, and then the other one is BUS, Business, Retail, Office Space. And anytime you're doing, re-guiding these places, it requires approval from the Planning Commission, City Council, and the Metropolitan Council. And High Density Residential allows residential densities of 8 to 30 units per acre. This specific project has a density of 19.53 units per acre, meeting that requirement. High Density Residential areas are commonly found near major roadways, industrial and commercial uses, and High Density Residential are compatible with surrounding uses, especially since this is right across from Stone Grove Apartments directly to the south, which is also similarly guided, and also some townhomes to the south as well. And as, anytime you're doing updates to the comprehensive plan, you must also make, rezone those accordingly, as required by state law. Sites rezoned will be from R1, single-family residential, and to B4, highway commercial, to R3B, High Density Residential District. And here are just some images that kind of illustrate that comprehensive plan amendment as well as that rezoning. The top two images are in regards to the comprehensive plan amendment. So this yellow area over here represents the Low Density Residential, and the red area represents Business, Retail, Office. And by doing that comprehensive plan amendment, it then re-guides that area to High Density Residential, which is seen as this darker brown color in the image. And then the last two pictures on the bottom are in regards to rezoning. So currently, as mentioned previously, one of the sites is single-family residentially guided, and the other property is B4, highway commercially guided. And by doing a rezoning, that would rezone the properties to R3B, High Density Residential. In order to make this project work, there are certain flexibilities that need to be done, and the applicant is proposing to do this through planned unit development. Planned unit developments are providing some flexibilities that typically would not be allowed in the zoning ordinance, and such, the city is negotiating some aspects in return. I'm just going to briefly go over some of the general flexibilities the applicant is requesting, and then I'll elaborate a little bit more about them. They're asking for an average building height of 50 feet tall, and to allow a maximum horizontal building length of 550 feet, zero front parking lot setback, and a 57-foot front setback, and to allow 104 underground parking stalls, and allow a lot area of 243,000 square feet. In terms of height specifically, in the R3B district, you cannot have a building or apartment building that is larger or taller than 35 feet tall. The applicant requested that we put it as 50 feet tall for this application, whereas actually, the proposal would actually be 47.6, but we rounded it up a little bit more just because of some potential issues with topography, especially with those steep slopes in the back of the property. But I'd like to mention that the southern elevation of the building, so the building that would be facing the residential properties, that one actually has an elevation of 41 feet. And then the northern part of the building, the one that would be facing the industrial building in the back, would be about an average of 51 feet. But that's because of the steep slope and drop in that elevation. And I'd just like to also point out, there have been other projects in which we have given flexibility for height. For instance, Neon Apartments, which was a five-story apartment building that was built, I believe in 2019, they had a height between 66 to 92 feet tall. And then Grand 35 Apartments was a four-story building for ages 55-plus, and that had a maximum of 78 feet tall. And directly across from this subject property is Stone Grove Apartments, which is roughly 41 feet tall, which is about the same height as what's proposed on the southern elevation of this building. And in terms of this project, there are some setback flexibilities that they are requesting. And largely, this is because of the steep slopes in the back of the property. Most of those slopes are between 12 to 30%, very limiting the buildable space on that property. Therefore, there's only the middle section of the property in the front southern portion that's buildable for this project. Ultimately, resulting in a zero setback for the parking lot, and then a 57-foot setback for the principal structure. And then, I think there was originally plans of maybe doing an L-shaped building, or some other orientation of the building, but ultimately, it resulted in a long horizontal building plan for 550. It's actually 546, but rounded up to 550, mainly because of those steep slopes in the back of the property. And then in terms of underground parking, the city code requires one parking stall for every unit that you have in the apartment complex. Since there are 120 units, that means there would be needed to have 120 underground parking stalls. But due to the footprint of the structure and the setbacks, and also the fact that they have a dumpster in the underground parking area, they weren't able to make that feasible to have that one-to-one ratio in the underground parking lot. So instead, the applicant is proposing to have 104 underground parking stalls and 108 surface stalls. They are still meeting the minimum required of parking stalls needed as a whole for the project, that just means that they'll have more surface parking stalls for that. And then they're also, as mentioned earlier, asking for flexibility for lot area. Their lot right now is proposed to be 243,000 square feet. That area was calculated by taking 18,000 square feet plus 3,000 square feet for every dwelling unit over six units. Therefore, 360,000 square foot would be the requirement for this project. I'd also like to mention that in the preliminary and final plat, there is land I'd also like to mention that in the preliminary and final plat, there is land being dedicated, therefore making the site slightly smaller as well. Preliminary and final plat, the proposal for a one-lot Block 1 Burnsville Housing Limited Partnership, right-of-way dedication for about 13,058 square feet, which is 0.3 acres. Their existing two lots have any regular lot line, it jogs in slightly on the south side, which will be adjusted with the plating process. As part of having apartments in the R3B district, conditional use permits are required for this. And I tried to break down a little bit of the units that will be inside this apartment complex through this table. They'll have a mix of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom, most of which will be two-bedroom. And some of their floor plans do change. At least for one-bedroom and two-bedroom, there's at least two different floor plans, but for the three-bedroom, there are three different types. In general, there will also always be two to three full-time management staff. The office hours for that will be 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So for building materials, a large majority of materials that will be used are concrete masonry units and cement fiber board. As part of the city code, there are specific materials or primary materials that need to be used for the exterior of the building. Currently, it is meeting that requirement by having the cement fiber board as panel and lap. There are also city code requirements on design features, and they include that by having varying roof lengths, or roof lines, contrasting colors, and the use of primary exterior materials. Amenities on the site include a community room, conference room, fitness area, office and package room, lobby, patio, and playground. And here's a rendering that just shows what those materials would look like on the building. You can see that there's different varying lines, roof lines on the property, and different contrasting colors. So this proposed property is expected to have 212 stalls. As mentioned earlier, that would be 104 underground, and then 108 surface parking stalls. For a minimum of 210 required for this project, they are exceeding it by two. And the parking ratio for this would be 1.7 stalls per unit, which is higher than some of Reuter-Walton's other projects, which are usually 1.3 to 1.4 ratio. The underground parking garage and rear parking lot will be accessible from the east driveway, and the front parking lot will be accessible from the two driveways off of Old County Road 34 Place. Based off the comments that we received from the fire department, they would like us to post no parking fireman signage on the west driveway and the southern portion of the front parking lot. And that is to prevent guests or residents from parking in that drive aisle in case first responders need to get there and access the site quickly. So most shrubs will be planted in the southern parking lot and around the building. There will be a combination of deciduous and evergreen trees installed on the west, north, and east side of the property. Based on some public comments we received from a neighborhood meeting, we decided to add some additional, or requested to add additional trees on the far west side to provide that net vegetative screening for the single-family residents that lived on the west side. As part of the city code, there are certain landscaping plan must be submitted, and within that landscaping plan, three of four categories must be satisfied. And that these categories are based on the open area on the site. The open area on the site is about 45,829 square feet, and has to meet these, at least three of these four categories shown in this table here. As you can see, they are meeting at least three of them, one for the over-story, evergreen and shrub requirements, and not for the ornamental. But in all the requirements in which, or these categories that they are meeting, they are exceeding that, exceeding the amount. Here's an image of the landscaping plan that is proposed for this project. If you have specific information that you want to look into further in terms of location, types of trees, planting heights, planting heights, or other details, I would just refer to page 54 of the document. Otherwise, we can discuss that in further depth. Generally, about screening, there's at least three things that the code specifically discusses, and that is garbage, rooftop utilities, and parking lot screening. As per code, all private trash must be fully enclosed on three sides, and must be 100% screened from public view. This, the applicant is proposing to have the dumpster actually centrally located within the underground parking lot, so that will not be an issue for public view. However, they will bring it out on pickup day for when it needs to be taken by the haulers. In terms of rooftop equipment, the code states that all utilities must be screened from eye-level view and from adjacent properties and public streets. The applicant is proposing to install a 35-foot tall, or 35-inch tall fence to screen in that area. And I'm just going to go to the next slide. And this is just an image of what that could potentially look like. And then in terms of parking lot screening, the code does specifically outline information on that. For instance, it states that all automobile headlights must be screened 100% whenever directed into residential windows and parking areas. Parking area must be 100% screened from a height of at least 3.5 feet above grade along the property, and a minimum of 10-foot landscaped area between the parking lot and building. As such, for this project, all the stalls are facing northward towards the apartment complex away from any homes to the south. And the garage entrance has now been moved or relocated to the east side of the property, where you can now access from that east driveway, to prevent and limit headlight glare. And conifer and deciduous shrubs have been planted continuously throughout the building, especially on that southern edge of that parking lot, to provide that extra buffering. The code specifically states that the shrubs must be between three to four feet tall at the time of installation. Staff is recommending to have a condition that states that the shrubs must be 3.5 feet tall at the time of installation. And in lighting, a photometric plan was submitted, and that meets our illumination standards in the city code. There will be three light poles in the front parking lot, two in the rear parking lot, and one in the far east driveway. All lighting will be downward-directed. A condition was also added to address lighting impacts on adjacent properties. For traffic, a trip generation memorandum shows that the proposed project would have about 577 daily trips. This is a 4% increase in traffic on Williams Drive and would be within capacity. Of the 577 daily trips, 25% are estimated to utilize Williams to the west. The remaining 75% of trips will utilize Williams Drive to the east primarily on Morgan Avenue. The increased traffic at the intersection of Williams Drive and Penn Avenue may be significant enough to warrant a traffic study. Our city engineer is in attendance for traffic-related questions if there are any. Planning considerations, the proposal meets the 2040 comprehensive plan by providing varied housing in higher residential densities. It will expand housing options for individuals at different income levels and life stages. The land is compatible with surrounding uses and provides a buffer from intense development to the north. And here's the recommendation. And due to the number of conditions, and that the fact that they can also be found in the report, I will not read them verbatim. However, I'm happy to discuss any of those conditions. And I'd just also like to mention that these conditions of approval are essential to ensuring that the development projects protect the public health, safety, and welfare while meeting established community standards. They help mitigate construction-related impacts, define clear expectations for applicants, and promote accountability, ensuring that private developments align with the community's long-term public interest.
Beautiful presentation. Thank you, Ms. Chapman. All right, staff is here for a question. Commissioners, what questions do you have for staff?
Couple of questions on kind of our existing workforce housing that we have in Burnsville. Do we, can you speak a little bit about what do we have today, the benefit that we see, concerns that we've seen from those, that we could learn, that we could apply to this?
I will direct this question to staff, as I don't have as much experience in past projects.
Yes, I can answer that question. That's a good question, Commissioner Lo. Over the past couple of years, the city has seen a lot of interest for affordable projects, but specifically in the heart of the city area. We've had a lot of projects that have 60% AMI. A lot of those projects were done by right. One thing we did learn through this process, kind of apartment boom per se, is parking, making sure there's ample parking on-site for not just residents, for visitors as well. That is one takeaway that I think we, as a staff, have learned from this process. Again, of all development applications, we do share them with all departments in the community for an opportunity to comment on it. So that, I would say for the most, the biggest takeaway we've seen is it's a needed, there's a need in the community for affordable projects, and through the region, for example, too. Also, that parking was the big thing, that we make sure there's ample parking on-site, and we don't want to park these sites.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Transportation roads. That Old County Road 34 is not a very wide road. Wouldn't a traffic study be prudent, based on current traffic, because you do have that large apartment complex, you have this, and even across the street from this project, you have a combination of single-family and multifamily? And is this going to present an issue? And tied to that, is there any thoughts on providing a public transportation stop within the apartment complex or close to?
That is a very good question. I think I will turn this over to our city engineer for your thoughts.
Yes, Commissioner Hamilton. So as far as Old County Road 34 Place, that is a standard residential street width. It's a 30-foot roadway width. So that's a standard for a local roadway, a residential roadway throughout the city. As far as potential traffic implications for the intersections along Williams, you're right that there is the potential that in the future, Penn Avenue could have enough intersection traffic that it would warrant a signal. It was just studied in 2023 as a city-led project, and at that point, there was very, very little turning movements happening at Penn Avenue. So it wasn't really even close to warranting a signal. However, the addition of these proposed apartment buildings could definitely change that, right? So the biggest thing when we're looking at if a signal is going to be warranted is the turning movements. So logically, left turns onto a busy road are going to be the, kind of the largest delay and the most concerning movement. And we expect that most of the traffic would, if they're headed east on Williams, they would actually route over to Morgan Avenue, which is already a signalized intersection. So that is, that's the basis why a full traffic study isn't warranted at this point, because the projections are showing that most of that traffic that would trigger the need for a signal is going to use the intersection that's already signalized. We know that, you know, the models aren't always perfect, so we have a condition such that we could study the intersection once everything is completed, and we can verify if the models are accurately capturing the human effect, or if maybe there are delays at Penn Avenue due to that turning and cross-movement traffic that would warrant a signal.
Commissioner Hamilton?
The current residential homes. Have they been, what's the status of them? Have they been purchased by the developer? What's the status of those?
The two properties in question?
Yes.
Yeah, there is a purchase agreement in place. I'm not sure what else has happened since.
Nope. Associate Planner Chairman is correct that the properties are under contract, I believe, until March of '26. However, the applicant can address that further on the, when they have their chance to speak here.
Any other questions, commissioners for staff, before I open the public hearing? See you none. All right. With that, I will open the public hearing. And as a reminder, if you'd like to speak to this agenda topic, please approach the podium, say your name and address for the record, and try to limit to yourself under three minutes so we can keep everything moving smoothly tonight. So I will open the public hearing at 7:15 p.m.
My name is Carrie Johnson, and I live at 2317 Williams Drive. I'm in the townhouse complex that is right on the corner closest to the proposed apartment complex coming in. I did submit in writing some concerns that I gathered just from the whole neighborhood in order, for the sake of time, you have those in writing. One item that I failed to include was one that was personal to myself, and trying to make sure that I got everyone else's in. So with the current property that's located at 2420, it's operated as a business. So when they are exiting their driveway, coming on to Old County Road 34 Place, and it's the season where it's dark outside at 4:30, those headlights shine right directly into my living room windows as they make a right-hand turn onto Old County Road so they can access Williams Drive. So I have proposed and asked if the front parking lot of this apartment complex could be a one-way direction where anybody coming in would enter into that parking lot using the 2420 side to gain access into that parking lot, and then exit out on the 2316 side, which is halfway down the block to encourage people to make a left-hand turn to go to Morgan Avenue in order to access County Road 5 and Highway 13, which is usually where the majority of the people are heading. We do have current issues at Williams Drive and Penn Avenue when we are coming out of our townhouse complex, or other neighbors coming from Old County Road wishing to make a left-hand turn onto Williams Drive. It's extremely difficult to make left-hand turns there. There's a lot of traffic that are moving in both directions. As soon as you get a break to go, there's somebody coming off of Penn Avenue, making a right onto Williams, causing you to have to sit and wait for them to make their right-hand turn because they have the right-of-way. By then, you've got traffic going both ways again. We avoid going to Morgan Avenue and Williams Drive. The lights are extremely long because they favor Williams Drive. So therefore, we all take a risk. If it's a morning or afternoon commute, it's almost literally impossible to take a left-hand turn. So we have all learned to take a right-hand turn, and then turn into Stone Grove Apartment Complex, make a U-turn, so we could take a right on Williams, and then head down Williams. That's faster than going to Morgan and Williams. So those are some points that I'll leave with the city to decide kind of how to juggle maybe light timing once all road construction on Williams Drive is completed. And then, I don't think I have anything else. I would like to thank Mike for handling our issue with the garbage haulers. Since that time, they're only on our street on Friday for actual pickup. So that happened immediately, so thank you for that. It is a very quiet little road. We do have a lot of concerns over that number of parking stalls at the apartment complex and what that overflow is going to be onto the street. We've had issues in the past with Stone Grove Apartments not having enough parking there, so their overflow comes onto Old County Road 34 Place even overnight. So we've had to engage Burnsville Police Department to clean up our road to keep it, you know, free and moving. So those are my comments. I don't know if anybody has any questions they could address. But the rest of the comments are all in the document that I provided.
Beautiful.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just like an add to the commission, the letter that she's referencing was provided within your packets.
Does the applicant wish to approach the podium?
Excuse me. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I'm Jared Ackman, Representative for Rural Development. Excited to be in front of you. I guess I just noted down a couple of questions specific to me, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that may arise. One is the status of a purchase agreement. We, and Kira was right, we do have purchase agreement on both projects through the end of the year. One is into next year. But the intent with our financing would be to try to close early next year, if, if we get approval and support, I guess. There's a question or concern about parking ratios. Kira noted, and that was correct, most of our portfolio from like a you-should standpoint is around 1.3 stalls per unit. Most of our projects are overparked to that, but we don't see or have any issues with that. So we feel very confident with close to 1.7 or more on this project. We'd have no issues with overflow parking based on our portfolio and, and multiple parking studies that we've done at this request of cities. I noted down the possibility of potentially turning our front surface lot into a one-way. We can consider that with our architect here. We're happy to look into that possibility if that works with our, our parking justification. But that's what I wrote down related to specific questions, but I'm happy to stand up here to see if there are any other specific questions from us. And I have our, our architect representative here, too, if there are more technical questions, I might pull them up.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? See and none.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else who wishes to speak to this agenda topic is welcome to approach the podium. If not, I can close the public hearing. All right. I will close the public hearing at 7:22 PM. Commissioners, I'm opening you up for discussion. I have a question for the city engineer. What, what's going to trigger a post-construction traffic study?
Um.
Or is there, is it?
Yes, thank you for the question, Chair. Simply observable delays, right, and complaints potentially from the intersection of Penn. But we can also just initiate a quick traffic study of that intersection and, and figure out what are the average delays for vehicles trying to turn onto Williams, turn from Williams onto Penn. So, yeah. There's not a, there's not a formal trigger necessarily.
Okay. So basically, receiving reports or making observations?
Yeah, exactly.
Cool. Do those complaints come into, like, PD, or do we receive those complaints from?
They come in to everyone. Planning, police, engineering. Yep, they can come in through a variety of sources.
If I can add on to that, something else that planning staff will keep an eye on, too, for the first year of the application, we'll have staff out there just kind of watching to make sure, see how it's going. Engineering staff will be out there as well. So that's something we'll keep an eye on as well. I'd also like to state, too, that, I wrote down it, no, no, I lost it, that there's a condition that states that staff shall approve a final landscaping plan. So there's an opportunity potentially to work with the applicant and see if there's a screening opportunity, maybe on the townhome association property to add some screening out there. That's something we can take a look at to address, to address the headlights. I've previously talked a little bit to the applicant about that. Also, as the applicant previously stated, they are looking at potentially making the driveway a one-way. So instead of cars being able to exit on that, I guess you would call it the southern axis, which would be into the residence windows, maybe they can do a one-way around where they'll come on to Old County Road and not impact the residence. Because it's not just hers, there's a bunch of units on that site there. So it's something we can keep a look, take a look at. I've seen in other projects I've worked on where we have added landscaping across from a roadway, the developer would put it on there, but they're not, longer maintenance falls on the property owners, but they could pair, put some plantings out there, something to help with the headlights on there. So that could be an option we can look at as part of the final landscaping plan.
Beautiful. Thank you for that. Commissioner?
I have a question just about the parking you're talking about. Can that be added as a condition with the one-way? I understand the screening and all that, but I look at adding 515 trips a day. That's putting a lot of added stress into the neighborhood, and it seems like a pretty simple request when they're bringing in that much traffic, if it's going to save a group of townhomes or residents. Or is that just something that, you know, I, I see that's something that could just really go by the wayside as this goes on?
Yes, Commissioner. Due to the, I can see the engineer can jump in as well on this. Due to the engineering stuff they had to look after, one-way, I really am hesitant about, about putting a condition on there requiring a one-way due to the traffic flow and the way that parking lot is designed. However, that's something we'll keep, we'll work on with the applicant. I don't know, Logan, if you want to add anything to that.
Not really, no. I agree we would need to review a site plan with that configuration, but I don't see any fatal flaws in it at this point.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Tied to the traffic study, or not a traffic study, is, and not for a condition of approval, but within a year after the project is complete for the city to, to do a traffic study, you know, we already had a neighbor express concerns even before the project has even occurred, and now you're going to add all these additional cars. Would it be prudent to set up a traffic study at some point so it just doesn't get put on the back burner?
I'm just writing down the question. Commissioner Hamilton, that's a good comment. We could add a condition requiring a traffic study be completed one year afterward, after issuance of the CO. However, there is a condition there currently drafted that staff, I think it's condition 24, that states that the applicant shall participate in funding any improvements if a traffic study does state that improvements are necessary at the avenue of Penn and Williams Drive. Right there, I think that's kind of enough of a trigger to require, now, to require a traffic study, just in that condition alone. I don't know, Logan, do you have any, or city engineer, do you have any thoughts on that?
I think our kind of current strategy that you indicated, that we're going to observe the area pretty frequently once this is complete, is going to be a sufficient trigger. It's going to be fairly easy for myself or other engineers, or even planning staff, I think, to tell, hey, we have an issue here that we need to do a formal traffic study, get this documented, and, and have for, formal recommendations from that study.
All right. Commissioner?
Additional follow-up question, and I don't know about procedure, but I do have a question for the speaker, if she is satisfied with screening options. Can I ask her to respond to that in process? I'm curious if you're comfortable with the screening options, if that would be enough to keep the headlights out of your windows?
I would, I guess I would have to say yes. I just don't know how that would be possible. On, on our boulevard, we have very mature 30-year-old maple trees that are there that provide a ton of shade, so much shade that it's hard to even grow grass underneath the trees. So to put other plantings there, I don't know how they would survive under that unless you're removing those trees in order to put plantings in there to, to provide some, you know, screening. But I'm open to the architects, you know, that would have more, you know, knowledge around plantings and what could be done, because that's not my area of expertise. But if, if that could be a solution, I would, I would, before that, I would have to also bring it forward to the association because there would have to be an understanding with the association that if they move forward with that, they would be responsible to maintain and, and keep that up. And so, there would be an additional expense to the association, and I'm not at liberty to give approval to that, but I could certainly bring it forward to the association board for consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If I can add as well, we will follow up with the resident on any kind of course of action that has come out of this so that they're, she's aware of what the final determination is, and if it needs to go to their board or whatnot. So we will make sure to do that.
Thank you.
All right. Any more discussion, Commissioners? Any questions? We'll entertain a motion.
Hi. I, I will make the motion. So I am going to recommend that the planning commission, that we, the planning commission, recommend to the city council approval of the comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning, PUD, CUP, and preliminary and final plat at 2420 and 2316 Old County Road 34 Place, subject to the 35 conditions of approval that are in, in the, that are listed.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Can I get a second?
A second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Ms. Chapman?
Oh, God, here we go.
All right, you guys. The next agenda topic is the application of SLE Architects on behalf of the property owner for a preliminary plat, final plat, conditional use permit, and concept and development staged planned unit development to construct big hits at the gateway, a mixed-use venue consisting of banquet space, indoor and outdoor recreation, and related accessory uses at 11937 Interstate 35W.
Chair?
Yeah, thank you.
I have an announcement to make.
Thank you very much.
Okay. With this particular project, I need to recuse myself from my involvement in questions and voting due to my involvement with the applicant through the fundraising efforts that I'm part of as part of the Burnsville Festival Board. So at this point, I'm going to leave the dais and let the conversation continue.
Thank you, Commissioner Hamilton. Does anyone else have anything to disclose?
Yep. Just for everybody's knowledge, I am also a board member of the Fire Muster. However, I'm not directly involved in soliciting donations, and this does not create a conflict of interest according to the guidance provided by our city attorney. So I'll participate in the discussions and decision on this item.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, Commissioner Hamilton has recused himself from discussion and voting on this agenda topic. Now, we can proceed with Commissioner Anderson filling in for the vacancy, and we will, we can continue on with the agenda topic. So, all right, Mr. Jakes, it's all, it's all you.
Thanks, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Great to be back before you this evening. As you mentioned, the application before you is from LSE Architects on behalf of the property owner for a preliminary plat, final plat, CUP, and PUD to construct big hits at the gateway, which is a mixed-use venue consisting of banquet space, indoor/outdoor recreation, and related accessory uses. The subject site before you this evening is 11937 Interstate 35W. The site is bounded by I-35W on the west, federal open space to the north and east of the site, and to the south is the existing U-Haul storage facility. The site is currently zoned B4, highway commercial, and is guided BUS or Business Office Retail in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. I will note there are multiple special districts or overlays that do apply to the property that we'll go through as we progress through the presentation. A little background on the site, the site is the former freeway dump site, which was in operation, accepting waste from 1960 to 1969. Following that, there was an interim use permit approval for a golf driving range in 1994. There was a recent extension issued in May of 2024, and that IUP notes an expiration date of December 31, 2033. We'll also note the applicant did also submit a sketch plan, which was before council, in a work session in March of 2024. At that work session, the sketch plan proposed was very similar to the proposal before you this evening. Council did react positively to that sketch plan that was proposed, and noted the desire for the applicant to work with third-party agencies for their approval and recommendations to be incorporated to the plan as well. The proposed programming with the application includes a three-level, 100-bay interactive golf driving range, indoor/outdoor pickleball and multi-sport courts, 400-person conference and event center, a children's playground, pollinator prairie, and recreation trails throughout the development. So the applications before you do consist of a preliminary, preliminary plat and final plat to plat the property as it currently meets and bounds. That final plat would include associated dedication of right-of-way. The conditional use permit application is specifically for outdoor recreation and building height as required by city code, and the planned unit development is for various flexibilities requested by the applicant in order to allow for the development to occur. Diving into the conditional use permit, again, it's required for outdoor recreation and building height. The proposed building height is 64 feet. Code requires a conditional use permit for any building height over 35 feet. Again, the conditional use permit is really to ensure compatibility with surrounding uses and to address any adverse impacts that are, have a potential related to the proposed conditional uses. The applicant has worked to mitigate any adverse impacts to surrounding properties. From a site plan perspective, the applicant has proposed the driving range to face away from adjacent properties towards the federal open space, not to affect the existing uses to the south of the property. And they've also worked to, along with that, direct noise and light outwards towards that open space area, and have located the sports courts at least 130 feet away from property lines, truly negate any noise, concerns, or complaints. And then there are conditions of approval that are included, which we'll go through, that address and ensure there's no adverse impacts to neighboring properties. And then just to note, the CUP is reviewed specific to the uses. So the findings are included in your packet, which are specific to outdoor recreation and building height per city code. The planned unit development application, just to remind the commission, a planned unit development is a zoning tool that allows flexibility in site design and land use standards. The intent of a PUD is really to encourage innovative development and design solutions, and allow deviations from the code, which are required to have a rational basis and reasoning behind them. The applicant is requesting four areas of flexibility. The first is for pole height for the golf driving range. The applicant's proposing a pole height of 150 feet, which really is intended to corral golf balls from errant shots from users. The netting would be proposed from the bottom of the pole to the top, as expected. The applicant's also requested reduced parking lot setback along the western property line, wall sign size maximum increase to the southern building facade, and then landscape deviations related to the planting of deep-riddled trees. In terms of PUD benefits, there's additional ones listed in your packet, but the main ones I would say is pollinator prairie proposed for 36% of the site, the planning of the site, which includes right-of-way dedication, the result of a regional sports and recreation destination, and then the applicant, where possible, has made an effort to exceed landscape requirements of the ordinance for shallow-riddled plantings. The proposed site plan is shown on screen before you. Just to walk through the key aspects of the site plan, a line stormwater pond is proposed in the northwest corner, shown in the light blue color. The golf driving range is proposed in the middle of the site. It's a total distance of 250 feet, consists of five various targets for users to aim for. The building is shown in light blue, approximately 52,000 square feet. Within the building is the conference and event center, as well as the three-level golf range bays and associated catering kitchens, restaurant uses, and the like. On the eastern side of the proposed building is the indoor recreation area, which consists of eight pickleball courts or multi-use courts. Parking is proposed in two areas, again, the west side, which is where that deviation is requested for that setback, as well as on the south and east, wrapping to the north of the wrapping to the north of the site. Proof of parking is proposed by the applicant. We'll talk about that in the parking section. And then outdoor recreation is proposed on the eastern side of the site. Total of nine courts is proposed, and then a children's playground abutting those courts. Touch on one other thing. The Pollinator Prairie is proposed along the, or in the northern area of the site, kind of through this area. These recreation trails would traverse the Pollinator Prairie, and then there's two gazebos for scenic views of the Minnesota River, as well as that adjacent federal open space. Rendering of the site plan is shown on screen before you, highlighting the site plan aspects that we just discussed. In terms of architecture, the applicant's proposing approximately 52,000 square foot principal building. Again, the max height is 64 feet. Proposed materials include a stone veneer, prefinished metal panels, and precast concrete walls. The applicant has included various design elements, as noted by ordinance. The elevations are on screen before you. The main aspects for design elements do include a defined building base and middle, varied roofline, and then accent materials exceeding 10% of the total proposed materials. And I'll also just touch on the signage that we talked about with the PUD flexibilities. That would be for the sign here on the southern facade. Really, the intent to that flexibility is it's not feasible to install a sign on the northern elevation due to the open golf driving bays. So that's for the sign. Terms of parking, ordinance does require 564 stalls. Parking, again, is calculated based on each individual use, either square footage or max occupancy or a combination thereof, and then added together to reach the total stall count. The applicant is proposing to meet that stall count of 564 stalls. They're proposing to install 458 stalls with site construction, and then as a proof of parking, providing 106 stalls. Staff is supportive of a proof of parking in this case, as it allows parking to not be overbuilt, and it's based on actual use. Given the application and the mixture of uses, it results in a very complex calculation. That's hard to provide an accurate stall count at initial construction. So allows that flexibility for the site development. In terms of PUD flexibility, there are two requested related to parking setbacks. The applicant has proposed a 4.3-foot setback for the vehicle turnaround, and then a 14.2-foot setback for a portion of the parking lot, which are shown in red on screen. Staff is supportive of those flexibilities. It's not precedent-setting, as we've approved setbacks that are similar to this application. And I would also just note, the vehicle turnaround is really intended to provide a safe and efficient turning movement for emergency vehicles, as well as delivery vehicles, as the delivery entrance is on this western side of the building. Related to the parking lot setback at 14.2 feet or 0.8-foot deviation, staff's supportive of that, given it allows parking stall count to be met and allows for additional space of the Pollinator Prairie to exist at site construction, rather than adding additional parking up the northeast side of the site. And the proposed parking, again, is highlighted on screen with that proof of 106 stalls, shown in dark orange on screen. In terms of landscaping, the applicant has proposed approximately 4,000 shrubs, which is over the required amount of 3,725. The applicant has also proposed 40% building perimeter plantings, when there is a required 30%, and made that effort to really exceed ordinance requirements for the shallow-rooted plantings. The applicant has requested flexibilities related to deep-rooted tree plantings. Given the site's history, deep-rooted trees are prohibited per Minnesota regulations. The kind of site-specific documents allow for shallow-rooted plantings that, you know, plantings cannot penetrate that landfill barrier, as it could result in the leachate mitigation, migration and erosion of the leachate. Landscape plan is shown on screen before you. Again, shrubs throughout the site, and then Pollinator Prairie through the northern area of the site. In terms of screening, off-street parking containing six or more stalls must be screened. There is a condition of approval included that requires the applicant to provide headlight screening along the western parking lot, where that kind of deviation is requested. There is screening provided along the south and east property lines through the preservation of existing trees, existing mature trees. The applicant has proposed a trash enclosure screening and rooftop unit screening plan that does meet requirements of the ordinance. Preliminary signage plan was submitted by the applicant. There is a condition requiring a final sign plan be submitted and approved by planning staff in writing. Again, the applicant has requested flexibility related to signage to allow 25% coverage of the southern wall when code allows for a maximum of 18%. And again, staff is supportive of that, given it's not precedent-setting, and it's not feasible to place a sign on the northern building elevation, given the open golf driving range bays. The applicant also submitted a detailed photometric plan consisting of 18 parking lot light poles. Driving range lighting is proposed to be on the building and facing out towards the driving range. The range is really intended to be illuminated via the targets at night for golfers. To touch on overlay and special districts, there are three that apply to the site. The first is the North Gateway District, then the Minnesota River Quadrant of the MRQ, and then the drinking water environmental, environmental overlay district. The North Gateway District was originally adopted in 1996 and then updated in 2006. Really, the intent is to provide guidelines for the area to create a cohesive character and to tie this area of the city together. The site is located within Area D of the North Gateway District. That district really subdivides areas within it, two different districts. Area D has objectives of the development, providing a positive and welcoming image, not dominated by surface parking. Buildings and landscaping should be strategically located, and buildings should be positioned to buffer the majority of parking and loading areas. The applicant's proposal did take into account this overlay district and did intend to meet the design objectives. Staff's review did find that it meets the objectives that are before you through the high-quality building materials, the parking being provided on the east side of the site, which won't necessarily be visible from I-35W, and then landscaping throughout the site where practical, as well as the Pollinator Prairie. The Minnesota River Quadrant was established to guide long-range development of the site area along the river. It includes the subject site area and then area to the west of I-35W. Within the MRQ, there's various land uses. The site is guided mixed use, which allows for a broad range of uses. The proposed uses before you tonight are consistent with the The MRQ land use plan is shown on screen before you. I just wanted to touch on the interchange. The subject site is here, this pink one, mixed use. On that MRQ plan, in the northwest corner, was the potential for an interchange to be placed. Currently, there are no substantial plans for this interchange to be developed. The MRQ, at this point, is not planned to be fully redeveloped in the near future, and staff, at this point, is not recommending that right-of-way dedication be provided by the applicant at this time, given the unknowns of when this area would actually redevelop in a large capacity to require that interchange Related to the drinking water protection overlay district and the drinking water supply management area, this overlay was established in 2015 to protect areas that are vulnerable to groundwater contamination. To note, the Minnesota Department of Health, MDH, does partner with the city to provide technical guidance, mapping, and regulatory oversight. And the DWPOD mainly focuses on above-ground factors. Within the code, it includes requirements of paved parking areas with appropriate stormwater management, secondary containment structures for potential contaminants billages, and then verification of required state or federal permits for regulated substances. Given the drinking water overlay is within Title 10 of the zoning code, which is within the authority of the Planning Commission and zoning title, we are required to verify approval with this overlay district. This will be completed through the applicant following this land use decision. The conditions of approval are aligned in a way that would require the applicant to go to the MPCA for review and approval prior to the issuance of any city permits. Following approval from the MPCA, the applicant would then be required to come back to the city and enter into a development agreement with the city that would be approved by council. That development agreement would memorialize the remediation plans that are required to address the protection of the groundwater supply, to ensure there's no adverse impacts or contamination as a result of the site development. And so, from a city perspective and related to the zoning title, we would verify approval with the drinking water overlay through the following process, which is outlined on screen before you. And again, that would be memorialized in the development agreement following approval from third-party agencies. To touch on environmental aspects of the property, floodplain, wetlands, and remediation are the three topics related to environmental. First, there are portions of the site perimeter that are located within the floodplain. Currently, the application does not propose work within the floodplain. However, if work were to be proposed in the floodplain, such as trail connections to the Black Dog Trail, the project would require a Rule C floodplain and drainage alteration permit through the watershed district. A conditional use permit is required for work within the floodplain, and then a no-rise certification would also be required. And there is a conditional, condition of approval that states if work does occur in the floodplain, these items would have to be met. There are three wetlands located on site. Within the attachments, they're referenced as Wetland 1, 2, and 15 on site. The applicant is working to submit the appropriate documentation to recognize two of the wetlands as incidental. What this means is that if they're recognized as incidental, it basically recognizes that the wetland formed in a non-wetland location due to human activity. So it's not a natural wetland, which then results in that area allowing to be filled or impacted by site activities. Terms of site remediation, just to provide some background, prior to the site's use as a landfill, did consist of floodplain, wetland, and agricultural fields. The freeway dump accepted materials from 1960 to 1969. I will note, standards for landfills in the 1960s were not as advanced or regulatory, I guess, as today. And so, in modern-day planning, this location wouldn't be ideal or promoted as a site of a landfill. But given it was from the 1960s, we are where we are. The site is currently unlined and is estimated to contain approximately 790,000 cubic yards of waste, covering about 34 acres, which does extend outside the site's boundaries. Due to the site's history and known onsite contamination, the applicant is required to comply with standards of the MPCA. To note, I touched on it a little bit earlier, but this application has been reviewed against Title 10, which is the zoning title of the city code. The MPCA is the regulatory authority that oversees remediation of sites and underground contamination within soils. So the site is managed by the Closed Landfill Program under CLP requirements. In prior tene construction activities, the applicant must take additional steps to address contamination. Among this, it includes entering into a binding agreement with the MPCA to carry out required closure and remediation activities. There are three main steps, which were outlined in the report, related to site remediation. The first is statutory requirements by state law and regulations. That includes the production of a remedial action plan detailing how the site will be remediated and soils will be remediated on site, which would be required to be submitted to the MPCA. Step two would be the MPCA guidance-based requirements, which was provided in the attached letter from the MPCA. It noted within your packets. Within those guidance-based requirements, the MPCA did note the need for the protection of the city's groundwater supply to be a key component of the remedial action plan. And then step three would be local conditions. This would be the city's area in terms of conditions of approval, memorializing the MPCA requirements, remediation of the site, the plans, and, again, conformance with the drinking water overlay district. In terms of planning considerations, the PUD requests are minor in nature and not precedent-setting based on other sites throughout the city. The applicant has made an effort to exceed ordinance requirements where and when possible, given the history of the site. Again, this proposal was reviewed against the zoning title of the city code. Staff's intent is to allow the regulatory agencies to do their part and their job, as they are the professionals in their areas. Environmental remediation would be reviewed and approved by appropriate agencies, as discussed. Remediation plans will be required to include measures to protect the city's drinking water supply. The drinking water protection should be reviewed by appropriate agencies, memorialized in a development agreement that's approved by council, and that's prior to the issuance of any permits from the city side. Following third-party agency approval, the developer, again, is required to enter into a development agreement. Before I put the recommendation on screen, I'll direct you to our city attorney to provide an update as it relates to the site.
Members of the commission, just sort of a late-breaking development here related to some of the items that Mr. Jakes spoke about with respect to the MPCA. As we've talked about before, in our training a few weeks ago, obviously, with respect to our city code, there's sort of environmental adjacent requirements, but we want the MPCA and MDH and those experts to make those decisions, so they're built into the city code for conditions, and we're making sure we're complying with 10-812, which is the drinking water overlay. But just to keep everyone informed and everyone to understand, MPCA did file a lawsuit against the landfill today. We haven't seen a copy of the complaint, but that just happened today. Again, we're not party, the city's not party to the lawsuit. Don't know to the extent of it, but it has to do with the compliance with the, the landfill program, the clean landfill program. And so, again, I wanted to make you aware of it, but it doesn't really affect the decision. Today, we're recommending that these conditions that make sure that there is that agreement, that compliance with MPCA, and MPCA makes that final determination whether or not the remediation plan is consistent with what they need. That then comes back to the city, comes back to the city council to memorialize that in the development agreement. So again, we're keeping the expert decisions with the experts, but did want to let you know that that has happened today. But in our view and staff's view, it doesn't change the recommendation before you tonight.
Thank you.
With that, the recommendation is on screen. Staff does recommend that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council approval of the preliminary and final plat, conditional use permit, and concept and development stage planned unit development to construct a mixed-use venue consisting of a banquet space, indoor/outdoor recreation, and related accessory uses at 11937 Interstate 35W, subject to the following conditions. Condition one, within the category of project approval and general compliance, the project shall be completed in accordance with the submitted plans and as amended by the conditions of approval. Any significant changes to the plans, as determined by planning staff, shall require review and approval by the Planning Commission and city council. Condition two, upon issuance of a building permit, all previous interim use permit approvals shall be considered void. This is within the general category of permits and plan submittals. These conditions would be required to be completed prior to the issuance of any city permits. Condition three, all applicable city permits shall be completed, submitted, and approved by the city prior to the commencement of onsite construction activities prior to the issuance of any permits. A, the developer shall be responsible for obtaining any permits necessary from third-party agencies, including but not limited to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, Lower Minnesota River Watershed District, Minnesota Department of Transportation, et cetera. Condition B, the developer shall submit written documentation from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and Minnesota Department of Health approving the appropriate plans and documentation, such as site remediation plan, including the RAP and construction contingency plan. The city shall be copied on all plan submittals and approved plans, and documentation shall be provided to the city. Condition C, following approval of the site remediation plan, RAP, CCP, and any additional required documents by the MPCA, the developer shall submit verification of compliance with city code Title 10-812 to the city. The plan shall verify adverse impacts. The drinking water supply will not occur as a result of the project. D, prior to permit issuance, the applicant shall enter into a development agreement with the city. The DA shall be approved by the city council, recorded against the property, and remain enforceable upon ownership changes. E, the developer is 100% responsible for any costs of extending public infrastructure. F, the final plat should be recorded with the Dakota County Recorder's Office. G, all outstanding items from the August 15, 2025 city engineer review memo should be addressed to the satisfaction of the city engineer. H, a final landscape plan shall be approved by planning staff in writing. I, the developer shall provide a snow removal and storage plan detailing how snowfalls will be accommodated on site. J, a retaining wall and fencing detail plan shall be reviewed and approved by planning staff in writing. All fencing and retaining wall materials shall All fencing and retaining wall materials shall be complimentary to the building materials. K) A final photometric plan should be reviewed and approved by planning staff in writing. L) The developer shall provide verification of headlights screening along the western edge of the western parking lot and turnaround. M) A stormwater maintenance agreement shall be signed and supplied to staff for recording with the Dakota County Recorder's Office. N) The developer shall ensure all required wetland standards and requirements are complied with, including setbacks. All standards and requirements of the Wetland Conservation Act shall be complied with and verified to be complied with by Natural Resources staff. O) A prairie restoration plan should be submitted, reviewed, and approved by Natural Resources staff in writing. The prairie restoration plan shall include but not be limited to the proposed seed mixes, planting plans, site preparation required for restoration work, and a long-term maintenance plan identifying the site shall be maintained to the state of Minnesota and Dakota County noxious weed management requirements. P) The developer shall pay applicable development fees and development securities. All required fees and securities shall be memorialized within a development agreement that is approved by the council. Q) The developer shall provide the required security for landscaping by two minutes and curb and gutter installation. R) If work is proposed within the floodplain, the developer shall complete and have approved a no-ride certificate and a conditional use permit in accordance with City Code Title 10-10 and the requirements of the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District. S) Planning staff shall approve a final proof of parking plan in writing. And T) Planning staff shall review and approve a noise management plan. The plan shall include implementable noise mitigation strategies in the event a complaint related to noise is received. Then the Parking and Traffic Management Section, Condition 4: If five or more parking complaints are received within a three-month period, the submitted proof of parking, as shown on the approved building permit plan, shall be installed. Condition 5: No parking shall occur off-site unless approved by the city through a shared parking agreement or similar agreement. Condition 6: Prior to the installation of signage on-site, a sign permit shall be submitted and approved. Condition 7: Prior to the issuance of a sign permit, a comprehensive sign plan shall be submitted. All signage, other than the flexibility granted via the PUD in the approved signage plan, shall meet the requirements of the sign ordinance. Condition 8: On-site hours of operation shall be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday and Sunday, and 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. midnight on Friday and Saturday. Condition 9: Netting and/or barriers shall be installed from the bottom of the intended netting poles to the top and maintained in good condition at all times, free of any holes, tears, et cetera. Any necessary maintenance and repair shall be completed within a timely manner. Condition 10: No exterior storage shall be permitted. Condition 11: A liquor license shall be issued by the city clerk's office prior to the serving of alcoholic beverages on-site and requirements of the license complied with. Condition 12: The maximum occupancy for events, including conference center events, shall comply with fire code regulations. Condition 13: Lighting for outdoor recreation uses shall be turned off outside of the allowed hours of operation. And Condition 14: All parking lot light poles shall not exceed 30 feet in height, including the base, and all lights shall be shoebox-style downward-directed with LED lamps and flush lenses. With that, I will leave the recommendation on screen. Staff is available for any questions, and the applicant is in attendance as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jakes. All right. I hope you guys have some questions. I'm going to open it up to you guys. Commissioner Anderson.
The property owner has been known not to enact some of the conditions in previous planning, you know, recommendations. Is there anything built into this that will, you know, get additional dollars of security money to make sure they comply?
Yeah, Ms. Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Anderson, I would first say that all securities would be memorialized within the development agreement, so that's something we could review potentially. I'd also note that the conditions of approval within this application are very descriptive and easily enforceable, I would say, via a letter. And, not that that hasn't occurred in the past, but I think it's easier to enact the proposed conditions to ensure the property owner is complying with the requirements that are proposed with the application.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of history on this property in general over the years, and we're looking at, obviously, use and building as the biggest portion of it, right? Then there's this entire land of the history. How does that play within with the agencies, the decision of this planning commission? Like, how does that work historically? Because there's a lot of feedback, I assume, that comes that we'll definitely say yes or no on some of these things that are presented here.
Yeah, Commissioner Lo, just so I understand the question, are you talking about what the next steps will be if this body were to approve this application and moving forward to, like, the city council, and then after that?
Yeah, because there's a lot of agencies involved that could change course or whatnot, right?
Yes, yes. So, following, if this body decides to approve this application and move forward to the city council, same conditions, same anything, unless something's added. At that time, the city council does approve this item, and it's up to the applicant, then, to go work with these outside agencies to address their concerns. Once they work with these agencies, they have to, it's going to be kind of a, there's going to probably be some interaction between the city and the applicant and the third-party agencies to ensure compliance. However, a lot of it is going to be between the applicant and those agencies, as the applicant has to draft the reports and everything to their satisfaction and make sure they do the mitigation to their standards. Once those approvals are done, once, let's say, the third-party approves the plans, that's when it comes back to us, where we would memorialize those agreements within a development agreement. Development agreement's a contract between us and the property owner or developer to ensure the project is built or constructed, and all site corrections are done in compliance with their approved plans and approve findings and reports and all that. At that time, the city council will approve that development agreement, which then would be recorded against the property as a record. I don't know if Attorney Jared Shepherd has anything to add to that.
Yeah, Commissioner Lo, members of the commission, just to be clear, kind of put a fine point on it. So if the applicant doesn't receive all of the approvals, including approvals from the MPCA needed, the project doesn't move forward. So it's very clear in the approvals tonight that you're going to be recommending to the city council, and the city council will potentially approve, that those are conditioning the development on the approvals of the MPCA and the other state bodies that are necessary. So without those approvals, again, kind of leading it to the experts, the project doesn't move forward.
Thank you.
Just kind of a clarification from me. So as a body, we're looking at, does this fit the legal standards of the city? Everything is listed under the recommendation, which it appears from the description that it does. But one of the things was quality of life, and it talked about the hours that were going to be there. The only question I have, then, to follow up with that, do the hours, there's an event center, or convention center, whatever it was called, do those hours also apply to that? People would have to be gone by midnight on whatever days they were open? Or are those hours different from the actual venue of the golfing?
So I can answer that question, unless Connor wants to. However, the hours' operation were provided by the applicant as part of their narrative. That's their proposed hours' operation. That was not from staff. However, we want to memorialize that as part of the approval, but those hours' operation were provided by the applicant.
And just to clarify, that is for all the uses proposed on the site?
Thank you.
I mostly just have a comment, just thank you for an excellent presentation on a very complex subject, very complex project. So appreciate that, and I do appreciate your, the way you've organized the conditions of approval.
Mr. Jakes, I do have a question. You can, you mentioned the floodplain a couple of times. Is there concern that there will be building in the floodplain?
Yeah, Ms. Chair, originally, the applicant did propose trail connections from the recreation trails internal to the site through the Pollinator Prairie to connect to the Black Dog Recreation Trail along the western property line. That trail is, well, the western edge of the property is located within the floodplain, so if trail connections would occur, it would be within the floodplain. However, in recent mittles and revisions to the site plan, the applicant has removed those trail connections. So currently, there's not work proposed in the floodplain, so there's not the additional requirements, but originally, there was, so.
Got it. Safeguard, okay.
I can add on to that. We want to include that condition just in case in the future the applicant does want to add those trails back or make connections, that it's in writing in front of them that they have to come back and get a conditional use permit and work with the Lower Minnesota Watershed to get those approvals. So it's more of a just-in-case condition.
All right, commissioners, any more questions for staff before I open a public hearing? All right, seeing none. Before I do that, again, if you do wish to speak to this topic, you can approach the podium. Please say your name and address for the record, and kindly limit yourself to three minutes or less so that we can continue on efficiently. With that, I will open the public hearing at 8:10 p.m. Again, you are welcome to step to the podium at this time. Where the applicant?
Andrew Gross, live at 1629 Burnsville Parkway. And I tried to look over the document found on the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency letter. Definitely does not intend to recommend this project as it is written. I understand that there are, we, that is not preventing us from moving forward with it, but it feels like this is premature to put before the city council until some of these really critical issues with the drinking water have been resolved. I can't fathom digging up this land, dumping it on the north part, and covering it with some bushes and saying that's good enough. That can't be right. Thank you. I'm David Young, 1401 Yer Lane here in Burnsville. This would be a real nice little project if the land is remediated prior to putting it into action. And one question comes to me is to, when you're putting up, it looked to me like three, four dozen 150-foot poles, what does the foundation of those look like? How far do they penetrate into the ground? Are they using pilings and giving a real nice path for any pollution to go down into our aquifers? And another point I'd like to make is, I think you should deny this. I feel the same as Andrew does, that this is our water, our city water that we're talking about here. And I would follow our tribal nations. They look down seven generations. What is that seventh generation going to think about us if we pollute their water? So I don't support this, and I do not support the recommendation. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Chair Braddock and Planning Commission. Good to see you. My name is Robert Timmerman. I live at 1000 Park Place, and I served on this planning commission for seven years, finishing my term earlier this year. I want to read something for you. "The owners have been uncooperative and failed to follow state law and work with state officials to protect the drinking water for the people of Burnsville and Savage despite our multiple meetings and attempts to work with them. Although the city attorney said that the lawsuit that was filed today is irrelevant to your decision tonight, I disagree. That is a statement from the press release from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency released just today. In my very last planning commission meeting, I gave a warning, one that unfortunately feels more relevant tonight than ever. I said that this body may be the only body within the city that can stop this project in its current state. I'm here tonight to urge you to withhold approval of this proposed development on the site of the freeway dump, at least until the environmental and groundwater issues are fully resolved and the state's cleanup plan is finalized. Right now, the only thing keeping contaminated groundwater from moving offsite is the ongoing dewatering from the nearby quarry. Once that pumping stops, groundwater will rise, come into contact with buried waste, and could carry contamination toward our wells and the river. MPCA has already detected pollutants like heavy metals and volatile organic compounds that we know can threaten human health. For my years on this commission, I know how appealing it is to see projects that promise vibrancy and investment. But this one carries long-term risks that far outweigh its short-term benefits. We have a duty to look seven generations forward and stop excusing generations past. You have the opportunity tonight to affirm that Burnsville still puts people before profit, safety before special interest, public health before politics, and future before past." Thank you for your time.
My name is Chris John. I live at 12915 18th Avenue South here in Burnsville. Happy to see you guys again. I was recently on the planning commission. I just came off. Last time we met with this property owner, he came in trying to renew the drive-in range that's currently at the location. One of the conditions of that renewal was to put up netting along the west side of the property. We brought up, but the question I asked was, what makes us think that they're going to follow those rules again if they haven't done it before? The netting never went up. There was never netting put up. Since then, the council has removed that particular line item. However, it does show how this property owner looks at the property. My biggest concern with anything in government is economics over human health. I think that's government's biggest role for everybody, is whether it's, whether it's public safety or bringing in finances or bringing in money for people. I think every time, I think every time, our public safety should always outweigh our economics desires. This looks like a great project. It looks really wonderful. And it would be great if it hadn't been put on this site that has such a close proximity to our drinking water. Do you know that 15 of our 17 wells in the city of Burnsville fall within that corridor right next to that? And we have items such as arsenic, barium, cadmium, chromium, hexavalent, lead, mercury, all sitting in the site. Right now, that's, the water is not contaminated because of the pumps up off the Cranmer Quarry. But imagine if something happens, and all of a sudden, we were drawing that water in. When would we find out? When would we know? If we keep going down a slippery slope? It just, it could get really ugly really quickly. I'm asking you to deny this application, not only for those reasons, but also by approving this and the city council approving it, the city is not, is not taking ownership of its own drinking water. It's letting it fall to the state agency. Who knows what happens to that state agency in the future? That's not leadership. We should be standing up for our drinking water and denying this project until the, until it gets cleaned up. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. John.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is John Hink. I'm at 6110 Blue Circle Drive in Minnetonka, and I'm the project manager for the proposed site design, or one of. one of, it's a huge number of people. I just want to correct a few things. First of all, there has no, no lawsuit has been filed nor served on this property. That's just incorrect information from the city attorney. I'm sorry. We do anticipate a pending litigation, and obviously, when we receive it, our lawyers will review the complaint, and I would anticipate they'd be denying the allegations and requesting relief of our own. But the city attorney is correct, and I appreciate that. Regardless, if that lawsuit does come forward, it does not impact what comes before the commission today. If the commission approves this, we still will work with the MPCA and all the other regulatory agencies to get the approval we need prior to coming back with a development agreement that would come in front of the city council. And, you know, I've done like 200 brownfield cleanups, and this is the correct path forward. You, you propose an intended use, and then you design a remedial action to be protective of human health environment, including the groundwater, including the drinking water. So we have a, you know, once we get the approval to go forward, then we sit down with the MPCA with a remedial action plan that's actually been drafted for three years, and then we negotiate that with the MPCA. The MPCA has not reviewed the proposed remedial action plan. They have not, we've, we've had numerous meetings over the last three years, and they've never allowed us to present that remedial action plan. So, and then, and then obviously, the proposed remediation that the MPCA has out there that they, you know, had out there for 30 years hasn't been implemented either. And so I think the, really the best thing for the groundwater and the drinking water is to sit down with the experts and design remedial action that is protective and actually is protective of the entirety of all of the drinking water in Burnsville. You know, I don't know if you realize that 2% of the potential contamination to the drinking water would be coming from these two sites. 98% doesn't come from these sites. So we need to find a solution that solves all of the problem, not 2% of the problem. So I, I would recommend that allowing us to go forward and negotiate with the MPCA. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hink? I should have been saying that. Not yet. All right. We do have someone on Zoom. I don't want to... Hi there. All right, please state your name and address. Oh, can someone turn the volume up? I'm so sorry, we can't hear you. Can we get the volume turned up? Just barely. We, we can't hear much.
Our deputy committee development director is working, getting the sound. One second.
Suey. Wait, pause and let someone else come to the podium for...
Just wait a second. Yeah, just give it one second. Sounds like it's coming from the TV.
Okay. It sounds like this sound issue is a problem on your end. Can you potentially troubleshoot that for me? Almost. No, unfortunately not. Is there a chat feature?
There is a chat feature.
Okay. Would you mind trying the chat feature if you're unable to fix the volume issue? I can kind of hear a little bit.
It's very faint, unfortunately.
Okay. Would you mind trying the chat feature? Yes, please. Did you hear that? Okay.
I think she, Madam Chair, I think she said she's on her phone, and she's trying to type it in.
Okay.
Just give the caller's phone number. In the meantime, has there any other questions we received via Zoom?
Who has eyes on the chat? Kevin?
Is there?
Sure. While we're waiting for the chat, I invite someone to stand to the podium if you want to take the opportunity.
Chair Braddock, Planning Commission, thanks for having us. My name is Richard McGowan. I live at 225 Second Street Southeast Minneapolis. I'd just like to, I'd like to correct the netting. We actually have netting up right now. I did put it up. Travis and Mike will vouch for me. I followed the site plan to a T, so don't know where that came from. And then Commissioner Anderson, I'm not sure what conditions, you know, you were referring to when you said that we didn't comply, but I believe we did comply with all conditions of the IUP last year. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is, I went on taller shoes today. My name is Mohamed Lawal, 1401 Glenwood Avenue North, Minneapolis, Minnesota. I'm the CEO and principal architect for LSE Architects. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. I'll just give quick background. LSE Architects has designed many complex resort projects nationally and done work in over 35 states. And in my 35-year career, I've worked on very highly complicated sites that are in international waters, that are on dump sites and remedial sites. One of the things in my responsibility as an architect is the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And I know that is also John Hink's canon as a licensed engineer. So that's just the basis on which we follow our practice. I want to step back, though, and thank the staff members, the planning staff from the city of Burnsville, because they've been working with my team for over six months, very intensively, to come up with the document that, when you read through it, it's close to 1,600 pages of information. And we've responded to them. We've worked with them on a very complicated project in a very intensive timeframe. And they've been very professional and have brought together their best information and thought. So I want to thank Mike and all the other members of the city of Burnsville that have been working with us on this project. As you all know, on this site, we have annually close to 37 million, 37 million vehicles that go by this 28-acre site a day. In my 30 years of practice on national resorts and facilities like this, and I'll say, I was the local architect on US Bank Stadium, this is as intensive of a site as any that I've worked on in terms of traffic, economic development. Also, as the architect for the first lead certified building and some of the most sustainable buildings in the state, we brought information forward to the McGowans in the freeway dump site that we think will enhance the use of this site as a human and public space, a meaningful space for the city of Burnsville and the larger region. We know that there are subsurface things that we believe that the engineers and the MPCA need to address, and we think those need to be addressed in a fair and open manner. But when you look at what's happening above and what we're looking at for what can occur for Burnsville and the region, we think this is like no other, and we're excited to be a part of it. And we thank you for your time this evening looking at this.
Good evening, commission members. My name is Hunter Cantrell. I have Jean Forman, the Burnsvilleian who is on Zoom, who, we're gonna, I'm gonna try and put her on speaker so she can talk to y'all. Is that okay?
Let's do it.
We'll see. This is about as technological as I get. Hi, Jean, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. I'm at, I'm on, at the podium now, if you want to try and share your remarks.
Thank you, and thank you, Hunter, for giving me a helping hand. My name is Jean Forman, F-O-R-M-A-N. I live at 3400 West Park Drive in Burnsville. And I've been following this issue for some time. I've been the recipient of unwanted text messages for fundraisers and the like. I think the owners have become quite aggressive in the push to develop this land, which would benefit them, and I'm not sure how much it would benefit our city. In hearing the presentation tonight from the city staff, I find this quite premature as a taxpayer that money was spent on all of this detailed presentation material before any agencies involved have even signed off. And as the project manager who was just at the microphone some minutes ago, this has been an ongoing issue. Why has it not been approved? Why have they not complied with already existing MPCA requirements? The project managers, the, the level of disparagement of the MPCA and the other agencies that they must work with, I think shows what kind of a business partner the city of Burnsville could potentially become entangled with and be holding, you know, the problem without any partnership from this owner. I, I'm very fearful for that. The level of arrogance does not seem to show a genuine interest in working in good faith with our city and therefore with our citizens and residents of Burnsville. I urge the city planning commission and the city council to reject this project until it is already been satisfactory, approved by the state agencies and the other agencies involved. There's no need to move forward and have a plan on site that has no future going forward until you've got the signed papers in your hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak to us at the podium?
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Jess Hansen. I live at 1318 Wood Hill Road in Burnsville. I've lived here for 10 years. I also happen to be the state representative for District 55A, which is the entire city of Savage and the northwest part of Burnsville, meaning that the potential of water that is at risk affects every single one of my constituents, as well as the constituents of the other elected officials in the delegation in this area. I also come before you as somebody who is a sixth-generation South Metro Minnesotan. My great-grandfather has lived in this, started a business down here, and now I'm a fifth-generation South Metro resident, and I'm now raising the sixth generation. So when we talk about the seven generations of people who are affected by this, I've known five of them, and I hope to get to know more than that. You know, I have a lot of other things on my plate. You guys know what the state legislature is facing right now. I'm also a single mom, raising my kids by myself and trying to live in this economy. So as you can imagine, there's lots of things on my plate, but this is so important to me that I wanted to make sure that I had time to come here today. It's not just important to me professionally and personally, but it's because I've been elected to be the voice for all of the people of my community. I have knocked arguably the most doors in this community of anybody in this room, and I've talked to most of our residents multiple times over my three elections, and I'm excited to get the opportunity to amplify their voices to you today. When we talk about what's important to these families, they often tell me that their concern about accessing ongoing clean water continues to be worrisome for them. Not just whether or not they agree with someone's science over another person's science, but at its core of saying that they expect good neighbors to do the right thing, that they expect that neighbors will keep their properties clean as to not permanently damage any of our resources because we all need them. Whether you're a Republican, a Democrat, an independent, or you don't vote at all, politics affects you. And this is an issue that has been entered into politics but still affects all of us, no matter who we vote for on those days. So I would ask that you look at the information that MPCA put forward today, because what they did today was unprecedented. They have never done anything like this before because there has never been a reason to. And so before, at minimum, I would ask that you consider tabling this tonight until there's more information available to you all about the unprecedented nature of this choice that they made, and then maybe until we have some more community conversations about it as well. I would love for my constituents to get a chance to have more notice to attend a meeting like this so that they can be here themselves rather than me asking you to trust that this is what I've heard from them over the many years. We have families in our community who are raising babies. They're filling their baby's bottles with this water. They need to be able to do so confidently and knowing that regardless of whose science they agree with or don't, that it's safe for them to do so. So at minimum, like I said, I would ask that you consider tabling this until we can have more information about why this unprecedented decision came down from MPCA today. So thank you.
Hey, everyone. Thank you for allowing time today. Kayla Bur, 421 East Travelers Trail, Burnsville. I am also a state representative for this community. And a little bit to just reiterate what Jess said, I think we need to remember the two sort of groups that are speaking to you. So while we all want economic opportunity and vitality for our city and for the region, remember that when one group talks to you, it's about the money that they are going to make. And when the other group talks to you, like the MPCA and elected officials and community members, they are interested in the health of themselves and their family members. So while one group tells you only 2% of the drinking water is going to be affected, do you want that 2% in your water bottles? That 2% that you give to your children? And are we considering everybody downriver, those communities that are raising families and want clean water and safe water for their children and their families? When you have science presented to you, you have the opportunity to accept science from the entity that's going to make money off of that information, whether it is true or not. And you have another agency who, whose purpose is not to make money, whose purpose is to ensure the safety and well-being of Minnesotans. And so as you're weighing your decision and which science or which entity you choose to put more value on, as your reputation as people who are involved in the well-being of Burnsville, please think about making this decision from a place where the entity who is most convincing is the one that is most invested in public health and less invested in their own wealth. Thank you. Thank you.
Just a comment on that is that as a professional, who's a licensed professional, as John, as I am as an architect, I am responsible for the health, safety, and welfare of the public. So to suggest that one agency has greater value over mine, even though I'm compensated, my licensure as a licensed architect means I'm responsible to the public over any client that I work for regardless of economic benefit because I can personally be liable for things. Thank you.
Commissioner Lo.
I have a question for the applicant. I don't know if that's you, Mr. Law, or...
Come on in.
If you could state your name and the address for the public record.
Yes, I'm Ryan Johnson. I'm in 780 West Crest Lane in Elsworth, Wisconsin, and I was the applicant on behalf of LSC Architects and the owner.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I just, so what's the plan for the garbage? You know, that's kind of what we're dancing around here. Can you kind of explain it to me kind of in layman's terms, what your, what your proposal is and how you plan to kind of get past the MPCA? Because that seems like a big, big hurdle. And you've, you know, you've invested a lot of time and money in a beautiful design. I mean, this is a really cool project. Don't get me wrong. It's a really cool project, but I also have to drink this water. And so what's, what's your plan for getting through the MPCA and the Minnesota Department of Health and making this safe for us?
All right. I'm actually gonna turn that question over to John, who's been more involved in the remediation process for the project. John Hink.
I think we're in a really good shape with the MPCA. We recently met with the commissioner, and so there's two programs. The Closed Landfill Program, which is kind of like the mothballing program, which, you know, literally has done nothing about this site since 1994. And then there's the Cooperative Superfund Program, which is an active cleanup program. So the strategy is to take this remedial action plan, submit it to the Cooperative Superfund Program, they evaluate it, you know, as the totality of the MPCA, to bring forward a remedial action. So, and just so, you know, I'm not misrepresented, I'm talking about cleaning up the 2% of the potential contaminants that are coming from this site, plus work with the MPCA on dealing with the other 98% of contaminants that don't come from this site, that come from dozens of sites that surround Burnsville's groundwater. So we have to solve all of the drinking water problem, not just the minutia that comes from this site, solve the totality of the region's problem.
So what's your plan for the materials that are on this site?
Yeah, to secure, to secure those materials and then to prevent those materials from, if Kramer were to shut off their pump 40 years from now, to prevent that water from rebounding, which is, you know, everybody's concern is. So the idea is to deal with that so that water does not rebound, not only into this site, but into dozens and dozens and dozens of sites that surround it. I mean, this is, I mean, I don't know if people understand, this is the minority of the problem, and we want to deal with, we want to deal with it in completion, but I think it's also responsible for all of us to really work out a, at a, at a solution that deals with all of the issues in the region.
So you're the engineer. I, what I'm asking for is how are you going to deal with what's on this site? You can only, you know, we're here looking at this site.
Yeah.
So how are you, so what happens when Kramer turns off the pump and the water table rises? What's your plan for protecting us from what's happening underground on that site? You know, what, if, because it's, it's pretty clear you're not considering what the MPCA recommends is to excavate and haul the material somewhere else.
Correct.
Yeah, so what, what, how are you, what's the plan for dealing with this?
That's what we have to work, that's what we have to be allowed to sit down with the MPCA and negotiate. You know what I mean? I mean, there's all kinds of, okay.
So like, what, what would be an example of what this plan is?
Well, one of the...
Like, like, what example of how you would deal with this without hauling everything away?
In the engineering, here's a real simple solution.
Yeah.
Okay, so Kramer's water pumping keeps the water artificially low, which keeps this water out of waste management, Assafur Dump, Kramer's Own Dump, these two dumps, dozens of other dumps. What if for, we just forever put an outlet on Kramer's Lake, never allow it to rise so it never touches the bottom of any of these dumps?
Okay, so that's, that's one way of, of just kind of status quo. Okay, that's, that's a, that's an answer. I appreciate that.
And just so you know, that answer is a $10,000, $100,000 solution. The MPCA digging up all this material and creating a new pile...
I understand it's expensive.
...is a $700 million taxpayer solution.
I understand it's, it's a big, it's a big deal. So that's, is that the only, is that the only plan? Is that...
No, no. I mean, that's remedial, I mean, and this is a very long, and that's where it belongs in the hands of the MPCA for us to negotiate. But, you know, this idea that there's this big dig and haul thing that's been hanging out there for decades, that's never going to get done, right?
Yeah.
You know, we, the people in Minnesota, aren't going to come up with $700 million, okay? And so that's not the solution. So we need to move this thing into an active cleanup thing and get it cleaned up now.
I think, yeah, I think it'd be helpful for all of us just to understand what that means. And you, again, you presented one option where the, we just pump forever, which is, you know, that's an answer, and it's a, you know, it's an answer that keeps things the way they are now, and that's fine. And if there's other answers or other...
And it's the only answer that prevents the, the 98% that isn't these two sites from contaminating your water.
So it's, that's really the only option?
No, it's not the only option, but it's, it's a really simple option, right? It's a really practical option. It's a known option because it's, it's stable now, if we keep it stable.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate your time.
Commissioner Lo.
Yeah, just a comment is, I mean, we can't get this wrong. That's the biggest thing. Like, you can't impact us. So mitigating the risk to zero is what's 100% necessary. So I just, I want to state that, that this, for all of us residents, is, this is very risky, but we just, you can't be wrong, you can't get it wrong.
Does anyone else wish to approach the podium?
I believe in Commissioner Lo, you're correct. A condition of the recommendation of this planning commission, a condition of the recommendation is, we still have to go through the MPCA to get it approved. So that will happen. So we're in the same place as you are. Andrew Burles again, 1629 Knox Circle. And I don't, I am not a lawyer, but there is a news release on the MPCA website, on their news item, says, "MPCA takes legal action against Freeway Landfill and Freeway Dump to protect drinking water for nearby cities." So they, they are taking action. They cite here, "After multiple attempts to work with the owners of Freeway Landfill and Freeway Dump, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency initiated declaratory judgment action against the owners of this facility to protect the drinking water supply of the Burnsville and Savage residents." And I won't even attempt to read the whole, but I wanted to state that it may not be a lawsuit, but there is action, and the MPCA is not satisfied with the owners' actions thus far. Thank you.
Hi there, Commissioners. Hunter Cantrell, here to speak for myself this time. I'm a former state representative from the Savage-Burnsville area, 20-year community member here, and just wanted to talk, share a little bit about my thoughts on this project as it stands right now. You know, we've been paying increasing attention over the last few years to the long-term negative impacts on public health of our families and especially our children of ongoing groundwater contamination and pollution, particularly with PFAS forever chemicals, which the MPCA has identified among other pollutants is extending well beyond the immediate containment site for this site that's proposed for development. And when I think about, you know, just the, the expectation that people have in their local units of government, their planning commissions or city councils, their government agencies in upholding the social contract and in protecting them from business interests who may be acting in a manner that is unscrupulous, perhaps in a manner that is defiance of state regulation and defiance of state regulators. The people of this community rely on bodies like this to ensure that their interests are protected, and our children certainly rely on bodies like this to protect them as our most vulnerable people, as our most vulnerable citizens. I worry about, and I, myself, I'm a student doctor, and so I see increasing rates of childhood cancers, increasing rates of children living with endocrine disorders, and all sorts of chronic illness from being exposed to forever chemicals like PFAS, like that which extends beyond the immediate containment area of this site that's proposed for development without appropriate remediation. And it is our responsibility to protect them. It is our responsibility to stand up for them and make sure that they are not harmed and that they have every opportunity possible to thrive and succeed without fear of developing a childhood cancer. And that's what I think about when it comes to this project. The economic boon is potentially phenomenal, and it should be done in the right way. And without appropriate remediation, without, as so many others have stated today, cooperation with state regulatory agencies, which has been on the table for several years, this project simply will not be done in the right way. It's going to affect not just public health, but the quality of our drinking water, home values, our tax base, and the quality of life that we have worked so hard to obtain. So I ask that you please add, at the very least, as Representative Hansen said, table this project for now, but please do not advance it in this current form. And that's my, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Richard McGowan again, thank you. So obviously, there's, it's very complex science. Now, I can't say, even though I have a biology degree, that I'm, you know, the one to present it. And that's why we're, we're hoping you recommend approval to the city council so that we can go to the Pollution Control Agency and sit down with them and work on our remedial action plan, so that we can work through it. But I will say, I'm glad, you know, we mentioned neighbors, and all my family wants, frankly, over the course of the last, well, over half-century, because now I'm a third-generation, you know, worker here in Burnsville. I spend most of my waking hours here, drinking the water, living here, doing everything. We actually just had engineers out from, well, not the PCA, they hired contractors. And just an anecdote, they, they sampled wells from cleanest to dirtiest. The very last well that they sampled is finished off in the garbage, so that water is literally being pulled, it's sitting in the garbage. The one they did right before that, so the second dirtiest well, is actually in the bedrock on the north end of the U-Haul mini-storage, which now we're getting into groundwater. Groundwater flows north towards the river, so if, if the well on the mini-storage, you know, is reading a higher contaminant level than what's in my family's landfill, that means that whatever's under the mini-storage, which is also a former landfill that operated at the exact same time as my family's landfill, has the exact same conditions, no liner under it, and they, they built the mini-storage on it. So, I mean, the whole northern half of, of Burnsville is waste, and all we're asking is to be treated fairly. Burnsville Sanitary Landfill has over 80 acres of unlined waste, and, I mean, this goes back to, to what John said. We, we're supplying between 1 and 2% of the problem, which the state, you know, wants to spend 3/4 of a billion dollars cleaning up, but they haven't, they haven't seemed to look at other possible sources like the landfill underneath the mini-storage or the landfill under the cloverleaf or frankly, Burnsville landfill. So we're, we're hoping you recommend approval for this project so that we can continue and go forward and, and work with the PCA on a remedial action plan and, you know, and keep working on it. So that, that's all I have to say, and thank you.
Teresa McFarland, 5700 Newell Circle North in Stillwater. I'm one of the project managers on this project, and I feel like we haven't done a great job talking to you and answering, Commissioner, your, your question about the remedial action. Fact of the matter is, this has been going on for 60 years. Nothing has happened on this property. It has been zoned and operated as a golf driving range for over 34 years now. So there are people on this land golfing and working and taking care of it, and what we want to do with this project is make the, make the property more environmentally sound because we will remediate the property. You were asking, the, the actual development itself provides an impermeable cover across the whole, almost the whole entire property, which is a very standard thing that they do for, I'm not an engineer, and John could speak more to this if he had more questions, but it, it is something that they do on landfills all over the metro area. There are, there are developments on the Total Wine, on France and 100 is on a former landfill. The Upper Landing is on a former dump. CHS Field, there's hardly a property you can find that doesn't need to be cleaned up. We have four engineering firms and environmental experts that are on this, on this, that have been spending the last three years trying to figure out how we can do this and make it better. So this, this development actually improves the environmental standing because we will be monitoring it. They will be lining and putting waste on top of that liner, again, standard procedure. So there is a plan. It's almost complete. We want to engage the MPCA. It is not true that we haven't tried to. We've been trying to meet with them to dis, we have met with them for the past three years. We just can't get the discussion passed, their Closed Landfill Program. So when John mentions going into a superfund program, it's to get to a solution because without this, there will be no development for decades. This will end up in the court system, the land, the proposed, and by the way, that is not a press release, that's an AI-generated document based on the, the draft of the lawsuit which we have yet to receive. And you can see the bottom of it, there's an AI-generated comment at the bottom. So it was not a press release. I just think we all need to get the record straight on that and understand that this development improves the environmental monitoring of this in real time. Otherwise, decades go by with nothing happening, and that would be very unfortunate because it happens all over the metro area. So your decision, we hope, would be in favor of moving this forward so we can have meaningful discussions with the MPCA on the remedial action. But as I said, it's about 3/4 of the way there. I hope that answered that, and if you have more questions from the engineers, we could be more specific about the site remedial plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi again. I'm sorry to come up again, but it's nice to see the team here again. I just wanted to say hello. I didn't get a chance to say hi to everybody. But this sparked a reminder for me that I would just ask that some of the comments you heard be further reasoned to consider tabling this today. You know, the, the fact that there's a statement from a state agency who is responsible for enforcing state laws saying that there has been a refusal to cooperate. I think that it would be diligent to have as a part of the conditions of this approval potentially be that there be a change or a shift in how those conversations have happened. In my personal conversations with the team, I've heard pretty clearly that there's been some status quo happening. Not a lot of things have changed, and I think everybody desires there to be some change. I think the project team desires there to be a different outcome, and I think the community desires there to be a different outcome in terms of how people engage with each other. And so a potential suggestion I wanted to raise again and ask is that, consider putting into the, the conditions that there be a shift in how those conversations are happening and potentially that Burnsville has and Savage, as those affected by this and the communities affected, have an opportunity to have a representative present in those conversations, whether it be a mediator or somebody else. Just a suggestion that I've heard from a number of constituents who say they would like to have a voice at those tables too, and potentially that could break some of the, of the stonewalling that we're seeing happening, potentially from both sides. I'm not in those rooms. I'm not going to claim to know exactly what's happening. But I do think also, you've heard claims that there's other sites that have happened like this, and this reiterates my first point, that it would be helpful to know why this unprecedented decision came down from MPCA. unprecedented decision came down from MPCA. I asked those very questions too, and said, why is this any different? And I got a really long lesson, that is too long for me to mention here, that I think would be really beneficial for folks to understand why this site is different than other sites like CHS Field or others that we've heard referenced today. That was all, thank you.
One more point, we have asked for a mediator, and we asked that at the meeting we had with the Commissioner of the MPCA. We are open to that, and I think that would be a good solution. Again, that gets us, we're not on that right now, we need to get to that point where we are negotiating with them, and we hope to pass this through so we can get to that point.
All right. If no one else wishes to step to the podium, then I'm okay to close the public hearing at 9:00 PM on the dot. All right, Commissioners, this is time for discussion. I'll open it up to you.
I have a question. If nobody wants to make a motion, what do we do?
So, let me first address one thing, I'll turn it over to our city attorney on that one. So, when we were up, so under Minnesota State Statute 1599, local governments have to do it, make it, have to take action on the application within 120 days, and that's what we're up against. The 120-day window currently expires right now on November 28th. So if this were to be tabled or anything like that, the applicant would have to do a voluntary extension to allow us to extend it beyond that timeframe. Otherwise, the city council has to take action, and this body has to take action. I don't know, Jared, if you, city attorney, want to add anything to that and clarify remarks?
Members of the commission, yeah, I agree with Mr. Rossel. I think if you are tonight not moved to take action, I think tabling is the way to go, but at the same time, the window is extremely tight. So...
Failure to take action is tacit approval, right? So we have to take action?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners.
I got one more comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Super cool project, wow. This will be, what a great thing in, to have in our community, and what a great location for it. I mean, it's like the perfect project for that site, but there's a lot of problems underneath it, so I think it's going to be hard to, hard to get to approval.
Can I ask a question? I hope it's not a dumb one. Is it really a contingency for us to make an approval for them to have a conversation with the MPCA?
Members of the commission, I appreciate Representative Hanson's comment and the idea that, obviously, it behooves everyone that the applicant and the MPCA are having fruitful conversations, but in terms of a land use approval, I don't think that's appropriate, that we would try to steer the shape of those conversations. Right now, the condition is very clear, obviously, that those conversations have to happen because there has to ultimately be some agreement in order to get to MPCA approval. But I think in terms of adding that as an additional condition, that kind of forcing them to have those conversations is really beyond the scope of a land use decision.
If I can also add on to that, during the conversation, there's a lot of questions about this application being premature and stuff like that. However, the applicant did file a zoning application with the city of Burnsville. We have to act upon it.
Yeah.
We, our code does not give us the ability to straight-up deny an application, so we have to do our due diligence and do our digging on that, so it's been this 120-day process. In regards to the drinking water, it is a regional issue, and that's why the state has these agencies that review these, there are professionals that do the drinking water. Our drinking water code currently, we work with the Minnesota Department of Health to review it when we get applications, and Logan can confirm to that, I believe, but we, when we get these requests and we have them fill out a DWISMA form, and then we usually have staff review those and also provide them for the Minnesota Department of Health to review those applications, is that correct, city engineer?
I do not know if the Department of Health reviews the DWISMA forms.
Yeah.
Their, their guidance is given to the city and...
Oh.
So we are the authority for ensuring that the collaborative rules from the Department of Health are met.
Correct. Nice, I misspoke there. So generally, when we do have questions with that, we do reach out to the Minnesota Department of Health and ask the questions, what if there's impacts, such as this case here. So, this application here in Forest, we did provide to the Minnesota Department of Health, they did provide a finding within, or a comment letter in there, stating additional information is needed. With these types of applications, there is two avenues for the applicant to take. There's the one where they go right to the MPCA and work through them, or they can, they chose a different route and they came to us first, and now they're going to go to MPCA. So that's why this application is before you tonight. Other cases have gone to the MPCA, got their approvals they needed through those outside agencies, that's, that was, you know, that's the number, that's option one. The applicant before us tonight took option two, where they decided to go with the city approvals first before going to the state. We have a consultant we have worked with for Bolton Mink that's in the audience that has seen it kind of both ways, I believe, and it comes up from the applicant on how they want to proceed with their approval process, is what we were told. I don't know if Jared wants to add anything to that, or...
Members of the commission, I think that's right. I mean, obviously, there are times where an applicant comes together with all those approvals ready to go, that's not the application that you have in front of you, that's why it's conditioned on those necessary approvals.
Commissioner Lo.
A point of clarification, somebody in the testimony brought up that they were appalled that the city has spent all this money preparing these documents, and I just want to understand that the documents were prepared at the cost of the applicant, and so that's, this is an investment that the applicant has made in this project, it's not, it's not tax dollars being spent on developing this project. And then, the applicant pays a development fee when they apply, and the staff time that's used, that's spent on their project is deducted from that development escrow, is that correct?
That's correct.
So it really isn't, there's no tax, minimal, maybe the lights on here might be tax dollars, but other than that, it's minimal tax dollars that's got us this far. And so, I think that's why we as a body have an obligation to make a recommendation, or to, we can't table this because the applicant is, they spent a bunch of money to get here, and so we, we're obligated to, to answer this. And then if I'm, I'm on a roll here, so give me just a minute. If we, well, whether we approve or deny this, if the city council denies it, then it's a dead project, right? Or they have to start over and come back with something else.
That's correct.
Similar, but a different avenue, if we approve this, it gets through the city council, it's approved, they go to the MPCA, they work something out, and the project changes, it's going to have to come back through this body because it's, you know, the project is different than what we saw today, it's going to have to come back through here. Is it, is it?
That is, that is correct.
Yeah, I mean, there's a threshold there where it hasn't changed enough to come back here, through here, but if it changes enough, it has to come back, they kind of have to start over again.
That's correct. Condition one states that all, the project shall be completed in accordance with the submitted plans and as amended by the conditions of approval. Any significant changes to the plans, as determined by planning staff, shall require review and approval by the planning commission and city council. So I'm not, I haven't seen that happen yet, but if the MPCA or one of these bodies requires significant changes, they have to redo the site plan significantly, and then significantly usually is they have to reorientate the building, right? There would be a trigger for me. If they have to remove 10 parking stalls, eh, not really significant. But a lot of times, we do rely on our attorney to work with us in what is significant and what is not, in accordance with state statute and law. So, we do, a lot of times we get these applications like that, we like to vet it with our attorney to make sure that we are following state statute and law.
Commissioner Anderson.
Just to clarify, it does, this still goes to the city council even if we deny, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah, we're just a recommending body.
Yeah.
Commissioner.
Just want to go back to what my original question was. Our bodies looking at, does this fit with all the conditions? Legally, does this fit? That's what we're voting on, essentially. They can't put a shovel in the ground until the MPCA says they can put a shovel in the ground.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And the city council then looks at the bigger, if the city council doesn't like the project, they're not bound by the same guidelines as the planning commission. They can just not like the project and just vote no.
No, members of the commission, they're bound by the same rules and regulations, the city code provisions, state law with respect to making decisions on conditional use permits, planned unit developments. That's the same, they're applying the same law to the decision-making, so it's not just a, hey, they can make an overarching policy decision. Within what you have in front of you, you have a couple different types of decisions, right? You have the plat, you have the planned unit development, and you have the conditional use permit, and there's different standards that apply to those. So when you're looking at approving the planned unit development, which is a sort of a zoning use decision, hey, does this work? And remember, there's flexibility, what you're doing is approving flexibility on that particular site, where when we have the conditional use permit, you have to analyze what's in the code, including whether or not it's detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. But of course, conditions can be put on those conditional use permits to address things like public health, safety, and welfare. But you're essentially making the same, recommending to the council what their decision would be. But if you, and just to be, to clarify too, again, if the council does approve, subject to the conditions that are in front of you tonight, that's not the final say. It has to be approved by the MPCA and all the other regulatory bodies with interests, then it has to come back, and this is built into the conditions, then it has to come back to the council to memorialize that remediation plan within a development agreement. So there's a second bite at the apple, should the council approve it. Again, and that is to make sure that that MPCA approval is then complying, we're making sure we're complying with that drinking water overlay district we have.
I just, I appreciate that clarification. I mean, it's, I understand the two different processes, the way you can go through, and it'd be nice if they would have went through the MPCA to at least clear this all up, but I would like the opportunity to at least see them get to that so that they can have those negotiations.
And then again, can I, if I can add to, planning commissioners, there's three conditions in here, condition under 3B, C, and D, that all require the applicant to get the necessary approvals from state agencies. Again, I think a lot of the conversation's been here, this is a regional issue of the water. You know, it does impact both jurisdictions of Savage and Burnsville, that's why the state is involved in that, because it does overlap two municipalities, you know, it's two different calls on that, I don't know if Jared can add to that, but that's pretty much, you know, we did add those conditions in there. So the thought process was, you know, example, condition B, 3B states, the developer shall submit written documentation from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and the Minnesota Department of Health approving appropriate plans to documentation, and documentation, excuse me, such as remediation plan, including remedial action plan, which is a wrap, or construction contingency plan, and they should be copied on all submitted. So we want to be involved in that process, even though we are not the ones that are going to make the review and approve those, we want to be involved as it impacts our drinking water. So, that is why we have those conditions in there, to ensure that we are part of the process, even though we're not the ones making the formal determination.
Okay, so those also impacted City of Savage, are they also aware and informed of these ongoing discussions? If what we do here at some point is also impacting Savage, are they also have a voice in this?
I believe MPCA will contact Savage and work with them if there's any implications on that. I don't know if it's 100% true, not of MPC, I'm not, I'm not sure what the MPCA does, but I would assume that there would be some kind of coordination on that one. But, can't, I don't know, Angie Smith from Bolton Mink can add a little clarification on that, or she, she gonna put you in an awkward spot?
Hi, good evening, planning commission members, thank you, Mike, appreciate that. Yeah, so we've been working closely with city staff to review a lot of the documentation that's been coming forward, not only me as an environmental planner, but also a lot of our engineers, other planning staff, et cetera. So, as far as the regulatory side of it, I'm not going to pretend to serve for the PCA or be their voice by any means, but there is a robust review process that the agencies must go through. I am very familiar with wellhead protection plans, source water protection, those types of documentation requirements that go through MDH and then back to the responsible government unit. So all of that has to get reviewed as we're moving forward. As far as what the actual process looks like, with all of the documentation needing to come through as a condition of this movement forward, the city here at Burnsville will have that documentation as a good neighbor that could be legally, I'll let you decide on that one, but shared with your neighbors and ensure that this information is very transparent, not only for constituents of the city of Burnsville, but also for those members of Savage. So I think that would be a proactive opportunity to move things, excuse me, move things forward, but obviously, looking at all the requirements and regulations that you have to abide by for city requirements, city code, and then also, the agencies will have to share that information with and through not only the applicant, but also based on conditions of this approval process to the city of Burnsville.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Very muddy and clear as everything. And any other questions while I'm up here? I'm happy to entertain anything that could come up. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So what I've gathered is there are many, 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 many conditions and many people that are going to be involved in, in this project and these decisions, is what it sounds like. So, any other questions, commissioners or staff?
Can we do the zoning and the plating and not anything else?
Well, you have all the applications in front of you as a bundle, so you have to make a decision on all of them. The recommendation, obviously, is to prove them all with the conditions in the, in the packet. If the commission is thinking about recommending denial, please let me know, and we can talk about what that language might look like. But right now, you have, you have recommendations, obviously, in front of you on your screens, what that would look like if you recommend approval.
Make a motion?
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion, recommend to the city council approval of a preliminary and final plot conditional use permit in concept and development stage planned unit development to construct a mixed-use venue consisting of a banquet space, indoor and outdoor recreation, and related accessory uses at 11937 Interstate 35W, subject to all of the conditions within the packet.
Thank you, Commissioner Lo.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Lo. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Thank you. All right, and we have made a motion. All right, thank you to all who has attended for that agenda topic, appreciate all that commentary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next agenda topic is updates. Any updates from commissioners? Updates from staff?
I'm just processing there. Yes, at the last city council meeting, the city council did hear the request to convert the Hampton into a long-term care facility. It was tabled until the last meeting. At that meeting, the city council did approve the project, subject to conditions of approval. At this time, we are working with the city attorney, we spent a lot of time together, apparently, on updating some of the approval documents to incorporate some of the conditions that were added at that meeting. And so, that project will be moving forward here, and the applicant will be going out for, be going out for RFP here to see if they can find a tenant, as they previously discussed. Next item here also is our next planning meeting, we only have one meeting in November, it is on November 24th. At this time, I'm expecting to hold that meeting, we have a couple items that probably be ready to go forward. be ready to go forward at that time, but we have a long break. We, our usual meeting is canceled due to the city council needs to be on a day. City council meeting falls on election day, so they're going to move it to a day, which is the day we're going to have a meeting. So, our next meeting is November 24th. And that's it for my updates.
Beautiful. All right, if no other updates, then the next agenda topic is to adjourn this meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, I got a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you guys, we did it.